There you go.
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Stowe Select Board Meeting for September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. We have been experiencing technical difficulties and we still are, so bear with us as we make it work the best we can. First, I'll take public comment on anything not on the agenda. The comment is limited to two minutes and please identify yourself and give your address. If you'd like to make a comment, raise your virtual hand or your actual hand if you're in the room.
So they can see you, they can hear you. But the people on Zoom.
No, they can now.
They can see us.
She has my laptop.
So I'll still be trying to get the cameras to work, but in the meantime, we have the laptop running.
I can use those cameras too, right?
Yeah.
We paid a lot of money for those.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Seeing no requests for public comment, are there board members?
I am just, um, I'm in hopes now that it looks like the new school is going to be moving forward, that the committee will really commit themselves to the promised efforts for fundraising to try to alleviate some of the financial burden from the taxpayers in our town as well as the other two towns. Um, it's a lot easier to fundraise and have, um, football fields and gymnasiums and theaters that are built and guaranteed for the next fifty years at least to be, um, a viable option for fundraising as well as, um, other, um, opportunities.
Do you think people could have heard him? Cause it's going through one little microphone.
They, I can see that it's picking up sound.
And since we're not on TV.
It'll pick up here. He's gonna do a re-record, like, it is recording.
Okay.
On this right now?
Well, I was thinking for people that are on, we should probably announce that that was JT talking because they can't see you talking. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Cause and the voice is gonna be somewhat muted.
Yeah.
So just recognize people.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's good.
Anyone else?
No.
Let's have the town administrators report if you can switch gears. If not, we can do it a little later.
If I can pull it up, which I think I can, bear with me one minute. Okay. Okay, um. Alright, thank you. So bear with me, I have a long list of thank yous for last week's special town meeting. Um, and forgive me if I miss anyone individually. Uh, also, I may name folks multiple times for all the different roles they have played. I would like to first thank Lisa Lavina, Kate West, Tina McAndrew, Deb Seith, Dolores Hamilton, Jonathan Daisy, and Ron Eld for getting to Center School super early to start setting up. We were all there on or around two P M. Uh, thank you to Chief Benoit and members of the Fight Department that were on hand to help set up and ensure everyone was safe and all egresses were clear. Thank you to the member of the Boy Scouts who came to assist with the setup and taping down of wires. Thank you to Chief Solisi and Lieutenant Barheight and the other members of the Police Department for handling the traffic, parking, keeping the check-in orderly and out of the rain. Thank you to the Stowe TV crew of Jonathan Daisy, Evan Daisy, and A.J. Tuck for videoing the meeting and for providing a transcript for those who had trouble hearing. Thank you to the Council on Aging, specifically Allison Tool and Dave for driving the van and coordinating those pickups. Thank you to Ron Eld and Kate West for all their work to test the clickers and to ensure everyone was able to vote accordingly. Thank you to Linda Hathaway, Deb Seith, and their entire crew for handling seven hundred and fifty check-ins quickly and efficiently. Also like to thank Rob Frieswick, Nick, and the rest of the Center School Facility staff for help with the setup and breakdown. Uh, thank you to our Facilities Department, Frank, Sean, and Jamie for their help with the breakdown. Uh, thank you to Doug Hyde for organizing the chair rentals for me. Thank you to Jackie Spataro and those organizing the Kid Town Meeting. Thank you to the Town of Sterling for allowing us to borrow their clickers. Uh, we borrowed four hundred and fifty of them, which were needed to, uh, ensure that everyone had one. Thank you to Lisa Lavina, Tina McAndrew, Kate West, Deb Seith, Linda Hathaway, and Jonathan Daisy for staying until after midnight to ensure that everything was packed up and put away accordingly. Most of these folks were here for eight hours, making sure that everything went off without a hitch. Thank you to all the residents who attended and participated in the purest form of democracy, democracy and open town meeting. Finally, thank you to our moderator, Jim Salvi, for a well-run, well-maintained, well-planned, and efficient meeting. Okay. Um, last week, last week, as the board is aware, um, the courts closed the case on our former treasurer collector Pamela Landry. Unfortunately, she was, uh, let off with an eighteen-month probation, and if she stays out of trouble, the charges that she faced will go away. Um, as you all know, I was in court and was extremely frustrated and disappointed by the verdict. Uh, in my opinion, we did not get justice. Um, as I told the court in my victim statement, the residents and taxpayers in Stowe deserve better, and I truly believe that. I think, um, I think it was a true injustice that she was let off with a slap on the wrist. Uh, she stole money from the taxpayers in this town and, and she should have been held accountable. Uh, we are officially planning for the closure of the land Randall Library and are planning to move the staff and all library contents to get ready for the renovation project. The last day in the existing library will be Friday, October sixth. Uh, stay tuned for details as to when the staff will be set up in the town building and ready to resume serving the public. Um, it is expected that the closure will take place about three to four weeks. Um, another way for us to save on funding is we are doing the packing ourselves. Uh, and then we have hired movers who will physically move the boxes. The staff will be located in the basement of this building. And then we are working with a combination of materials being at Pompo. Uh, furniture and items in the building will be to the former fire station. I think the children's books collection and programming, much of which will be held across the street at the town hall. And then we are, um, organizing all the meeting space in this building to accommodate day programs and Saturday programs so that they continue to offer services while the renovation is taking place. And I think that's it for tonight.
That's a lot. Thank you. Next, we have several appointments. First of all.
Oh, Ruth is actually in the waiting room.
She's in the waiting room, yeah.
Right. I'm gonna try and log back in and see if I can get control.
So. Hi, Ruth.
Oh, I need to let her unmute.
Hello, Ruth, can you, are you there? I can see you. So thank you for coming.
I think we can't hear her.
We can't.
Oh, it's cause of my volume's not up.
Oh.
Uh, hold on.
Well, give me one second, second. Yeah, it, it.
My volume has to be off. Or it will do that weird cyclical thing. It's the left.
There we go.
Okay, so I actually.
Someone else has.
About the hour.
Could be. No, I didn't put it back in. Can you, please?
We are.
Does that sound up?
So. That sounds good. Ruth. Hi.
There you go.
We're, uh, first we have an appointment to the zoning board of appeals through June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Uh, Sodah. Do you wanna say a few words, Ruth, about your interest, your continued interest?
We need that volume.
That volume actually has to be on now, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, it's the audio volume, it's not your microphone. Can you do any of this, please?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah, do you want me to come do it?
No, I can unmute.
Here. It.
Yeah, depress.
I know, it's a Mac, I'm sorry.
I have a Mac, it's just a different version.
Ruth, can you try and say something so we can see if we can hear you?
Nope, no, I cannot.
Um, I can't unmute.
Oh, you, because you have to unmute me, sorry, that's why.
Let's try that again. Can you hear me now?
I think they can hear us. They've been able to hear us, it's we can't hear them, cause the, oh.
So. Let's see if we can hear you, Ruth.
No.
Nope, still can't hear her.
I have to turn the audio up on the, can, yeah, but that's when it started doing that weird thing.
There you go. I think you have to mute everybody but that one.
Oh.
Oh.
Where, where, sounds like it's working.
If you, maybe I'll talk, you guys.
Just mute yourselves, I'll talk and then, you know, it's probably the only way to do it.
Thank you.
So do you want me to just give you a little bit of background?
Yeah.
Okay, so I've been lurking on the Z B A for, golly, maybe a decade, I mean, really a long time. I've served on some hearings. My primary interest in joining the Z B A to begin with was to serve on these large comprehensive permits because I have background both in my day job, which is in, in, um, sort of complex real estate and through the planning board and thinking through sensible development in Stowe. And, um, for those of you guys who don't know me, I served on the planning board for, uh, I don't know, maybe twelve years or something like that. I mean, quite a while through some of the more contentious stuff, some subdivision stuff, but primarily the cell tower discussions that were really adversarial and difficult. And I think that the proudest thing that I was able to do was chair some, chair a particularly difficult hearing. Um, and just kind of have everything be level-headed, even-handed, clear. Um, and res, you know, responsive to the citizens' needs and also with a clear eye to what the planning board's function is and what it, what it does um, in serving the town's interests. The same mission is true on the Z B A. The Z B A has a very different function. It's essentially a quasi judicial body with a fairly narrow mandate. Um, and I look at my job as being, um, serving the town's interests in a way that is, as same thing, fair, even-handed and, and thoughtful. So that's really it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's fantastic.
They couldn't hear you.
Uh.
So if you mute that now.
Oh.
I'll unmute this.
So I'm muted. But I have to turn the.
So I.
You have to turn the audio off. Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Uh. So now I un, I can unmute. Other comments from the board? Questions for Ruth?
Thank you for continuing.
Any question, thank you for, for putting your name forward.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Yes.
Um, with no further comments?
Can I make the comment after the word? Say it again.
Uh.
I, I also applied for the same position.
Sure.
In the permanent position on the, on the zoning board. And, um, you know, first, you know, I think anytime somebody, you know, volunteers, it's commendable. And, you know, in this case, she's obviously, you know, um, had experience, you know, being on the zoning board and the planning board. And I think that's, I think that's commendable as well. Um, but, you know, for the last five years, I've been on the zoning board and I've been on it consistently. I don't think I've missed one, one meeting in that whole five-year period. And, um, you know, I've also been on the planning board for fifteen years. And I have, you know, bring legal expertise to the board. And, you know, I'd welcome being on the board, you know, I, I think that'd be excellent. It's just that when it comes to the issue of the permanent, um, position, um, that's, you know, that's something I'd wanna do and for a very simple reason, um, it's because you have a vote. Um, you know, occasionally I, I do get a vote if there's an absence or there's a recusal. Um, but I would just like to have a consistent vote. And, um, you know, I, for some reason, I've been bypassed three times, you know, three other appointments, you know, um, that have not gone to me. And, um, and, and I, I just, you know, I feel, you know, I should, you know, given the time I put in, experience I have, um, you know, that I should have, you know, a permanent voting um, position on the board. Um, but I, you know, I think, you know, as I say, this would be great on the board, you know, as an associate member. And if another permanent position opened, I, I mean, I, I'd be glad to, you know, see her, you know, be on that permanent position. Um, you know, in the years that I've been on the board now, five on the zoning board, fifteen on the, um, planning board, you know, I've dealt with a lot of different disputes. And I've always taken the position that you try to mediate conflicts as best you can. Um, but, you know, when you have to make a decision, you make a decision and, and, you know, I've been able to do that.
I, I appreciate your speaking up for yourself.
Yeah.
At present, I feel, and I'll ask the board and we'll take a vote. Uh, the town administrator has recommended Ruth to us as, as the candidate that she, uh, sees as a strong candidate for this position. And that's useful to us because we can't be everywhere and see everything. And, um, she's interviewed each of you, I think, separately. And that's the process that we are currently following. And so that is why we have the appointment the way it is on the agenda tonight.
I mean, I would make a couple other points, too.
If you can be brief.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I think it would be useful when you're making appointments to boards, if you, um, talk to people that are on the boards as well. I, I think that's a useful thing that, you know, would be, would be helpful to be done. And, um, and I just think, you know, I, I understand you have other things to do, but I think that would be helpful. I don't know what the other board members would say. I, I haven't talked to them about, you know, these, you know, um, disappointment, you know. They might feel the same way as the town administrator or they might not, but I think it would be a good idea, you know, in terms of appointments to boards if you did.
So the, the town administrator has had conversations with other people on the board, with Karen, Karen Kelleher and David Hart, Michael the Chair. And they both recommend Ruth to the position.
All right, well, Karen, um, and I have a lot of respect for Karen, she's got a, a, is one of the board members. And David is one board member there. Five, six, six of us. So it's, it's more than just one, two individuals.
So I, I thank you for your comment and I thank you for advocating for yourself. And I'm going to move on.
Ready for motion?
Yes.
Okay, um, Ruth, can you, uh, can you say how to say Ruth's last name? Cause I can't.
Sodah.
Sodah.
Okay, perfect. Uh, Madam Chair, I'm.
Yep.
I move to appoint Ruth Sodah to the zoning board of appeals as a full member for the remainder of a five-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Next, we have an appointment of Lieutenant Kelly Barheight. Oh, thank you, Ruth. Uh, I wonder if she's. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Ruth.
Sorry for the technical difficulties. Thank you so much for bringing your expertise to the board at this time.
Alright.
So next, we have the appointment of Lieutenant Kelly Barheight to the Complete Streets Committee representing the Police Department through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Do we?
No, so the next two appointments, uh, they're really standard. It's, it's a member of the department needs to participate. So I did not ask either of them to be on the meeting tonight.
Great. Do, does the board have any questions or comments on Lieutenant Barheight's appointment? Yes.
I just would say that I'm on the Complete Streets Committee and the committee has not had a quorum because we haven't had appointed members, so this is a beneficial thing.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hagman Clark.
Oh, you're welcome, Madam Chair. I'm gonna try and connect us one more time.
Okay.
Okay, let's.
Would you like a motion?
Have a motion, thank you.
Alright, Madam Chair, I move to appoint Lieutenant Kelly Barheight. To the Complete Streets Committee, representing the Police Department for a remainder of a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Moving along, we have the appointment of Captain Barry Evers to the Complete Streets Committee representing the Fire Department through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. And ready for a motion?
I will give you a motion. Um, Madam Chair, I move to appoint Captain Barry Evers to the Complete Streets Committee, representing the Fire Department for the remainder of a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
May I just pause for one moment? So this camera is now up. You can see it does have the whole board. It's from a distance. Um, and then there is a microphone and speaker, so you should be able to hear better if someone does need to speak, so. You can keep this one up if you want.
I'm happy to dispense with it if it.
It's up to you.
I would love my notes.
Back you go.
Thank you. Alright.
No need to look in the mirror while I'm running the meeting. I know that can be rude. Okay, now we will have discussion possible vote on, um, highway disposal request when the town administrator is ready.
Yes.
Thank you for all the hats you've got perched on your head tonight.
My pleasure. Um, so this is for a dumpster that the Highway Department at some point acquired. Um, I think I included a picture or two. It's rested out. They have no use for it. It's big, it's bulky. We just wanna get it out of here. Um, we don't believe there's any value, but they'll put it up on municipal to see if anyone's interested in it for scrap materials. Um, so I ask that you declare it surplus and allow us to dispose of it.
Great, ready for motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Highway Department request to declare as surplus a metal roll-off dumpster valued at less than ten thousand dollars and belonging to the town and to authorize the disposal of this surplus item.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Next, we have a request for modification of the Shelburne Farm One Day Liquor License Hours.
Since Ted is on.
Hi, Ted, thanks for.
Hi.
Hanging in through the whole meeting here. Uh, you wanna say a couple of words about, uh, your request?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry to be back already.
No worries.
So we're sort of, uh, learning as we go. Things have gone exceptionally well and it's been very calm. Um, and what we discovered is that, um, at four o'clock when we're shutting down, uh, you know, that's our limit. Um, that's when we have a lot of people coming in, wrapping up their sort of outdoor part of their activities and they're coming up and sort of congregating where the barn is, and a lot of people are lining up and wanting to come in and we're turning them away. So, um, it seems like it would be good to stay going for like another hour, hour and a half. And that's why I requested till five thirty, and it's mostly just because I think a lot of people aren't actually getting in. And, uh, but I wanted to keep it inside of our normal operation. We shut down everything at six o'clock, so that's why I was proposing five thirty. So we have half an hour buffer to get people kind of launched and on their way.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
And I completely understand the learner's growth process. Uh, any questions or comments from the board, Hector?
Wouldn't it make sense to maybe extend it to like six thirty and you can stop serving at five thirty if you want?
They wanna stop. They, they close at six.
Close at six.
Right. They don't, they don't wanna extend their hours.
I know, but you could still have it authorized until six thirty if for any reason you need it. And you can shut, stop serving at five thirty, but you've got that buffer.
I see.
Uh, sure, I, that would be wonderful. The, the one, uh, the one thing that would come, has come up, the, the proprietor, I don't know what else to call him, the brewer from Pony Shack, he's our neighbor in Box Bro. Um, he's asked if he could come in and talk to people, but because of the, running his place, he would have to come later. So it might be like a five thirty type thing. For him just to come in and have it operating, that would be great. I mean, we haven't set anything up, but he's asked. So having that flexibility, if we needed it, would be great. We, but we would plan to, normally, we would be closing it down at five thirty so that it would end by six. But, yeah, I mean, if, if it's agreeable, we, we, it would be good to have that ability if needed.
What is on the?
Is that possible to do?
What's on the license?
It's, the license is all say five thirty.
The license is the time that was requested, so if I can get it and edit it while you're all still here.
Yeah.
So we're just having a little complexities, you know, with what going on tonight. So Denise would have to print another copy for us to sign that has the correct time with that change on it. Um, she's, if she can do so, we will do so, so. Um.
Well, we can vote whether or not to do so and when she gets to it, it can be printed out and we'll sign it.
Yeah, any other comments from the board? Any, any, uh, questions or, I mean, that makes sense to me?
It makes sense, and I mean, even if we extend it to six thirty, I don't think it's a detriment, uh, at all to the neighborhood or anybody else. Um, it's not going into the wee hours of the morning or anything like that. So I, I don't see that as an issue.
Right.
And I think it's an advantage, um, for, um, the proprietors to be able to have the flexibility. So if he has a presentation, um, coming in, it gives him a little bit more wiggle room to work with.
Or maybe you get a whopping good line and you just wanna go fifteen more minutes.
Well, based on the way things have gone this year, I hope we're in that situation. It's been so, the weather's been terrible, so we're, you know, fingers crossed it's gonna improve.
Supposed to be good weather.
We're outside today.
This weekend's supposed to be a good weather weekend.
It'll be a big weekend, I think, yeah.
So we can. Just approve this, you can.
Yeah, I'll just, so what, what time do we just, do we decide? Six thirty? Ted, does that work for you?
That, that would be fantastic, yeah.
Okay, okay, great, great.
I don't think that works importantly.
Um, Madam Chair, are you ready for a motion?
I believe so. Any other comments? Does Town Administrator have any comments?
Um, I do not.
Great.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve a modification of the special liquor licenses approved at the September twelfth meeting for Shelburne Farm to extend until six thirty P M, the hours in which cider can be served for each of the days that a license has been granted.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Well, thank you. I can't thank you enough. All of you, thank you. It's really great. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. Thanks for being patient with our, our interesting evening.
Yeah. No, it's going great. We're all here.
Alright, well, I hope you do have great weather this weekend and, and excellent sales.
Well, uh, thank you, very much appreciate it.
Can I, JT, are there six licenses there?
Yes, there are.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we are going to adopt uh, Mass General Law Chapter thirty-two B, Sections twenty-one through. uh, Mass. General Law Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23 to allow negotiation of health insurance changes.
Madam Chair, um, I'm going to recuse myself um, from this discussion.
Gotcha.
I'm ashamed you need to do a minute.
Uh, because my better half, um, and she truly is uh, works for the town. I don't want any sort of conflict, so I'm gonna recuse myself and I'll step out.
Okay. See you in a bit.
Thank you. Um, Hector, will you make the second for this? Thank you.
Sure. Do we, Denise, do you need a few minutes?
Um, I can chat if there are questions.
If you don't get it printed out to the next day and we come back and sign them, that's what.
They need them. If he wants, but he wants them for the weekend. I know, but then you have to have the whole board come back. It's better to do it here. I need to, I need to have everyone here before Friday. So tomorrow or Thursday. Um, so this continues what, what we discussed at the last meeting. We are in the process of obtaining some quotes on health insurance to see if there's a better, lower costing option for the employees. Uh, we notified the four unions as well as the retiree, uh, the State Retirement Board who we were required to. Um, and just let them know that we would be holding this discussion tonight, that I'm asking you to accept Chapter 32B Sections 21 through 23. I gave you the entire CMR. I don't expect that any of you read it all. But it just outlines, there's also, I think, the easier sort of timetable that summarizes that, what we need to do. So tonight I'm asking you to take a vote that simply would allow us to, um, if we decide to proceed with making some changes, call the union members together as a, they form their own insurance group. Uh, we meet with them, we discuss the changes, we negotiate, and then we decide if we're gonna move forward. Uh, in order to, if we decide we want to change insurance, we have to do it by December 1st. Um, so that's why it's a very rushed timeline. And again, at this point, I really don't know. Uh, we have gotten some prices. Some of them are higher than what we currently pay. But they see on average significantly lower increases than the current plan that we're in. And there's other plans that are lower costing, um, but may have higher deductibles and copayments. So our job now is to figure out the total overall cost to sort of the average employee and figure out, um, if it's worth it. As part of the uh, Sections 21 to 23, we have to calculate the savings and share those back with employees. So it potentially, if there's a large savings, it could potentially mean a shift in percentages, that we pick up a higher percentage of the premium. It could be that we create a health savings account and as they incur deductibles or copayments, we reimburse them. We're still working through those things. This vote tonight just allows us to meet with the unions and have these discussions.
Great. Any questions from the board?
So this, that we're seeing, we weren't supposed to read, by the way?
No, no, I just didn't expect anyone to read it all.
Sorry, I did read it. I fell asleep a couple of times, but that's fine. But it references MGL, Mass. General Law 32, but isn't, what's the C, I guess that's what I'm asking is what is the CMR?
It's just the, it's sort of the explanation. It comes out as a different guideline.
So that's, so that's why the different number.
No, one's the law and one's the, one's the code of Massachusetts regulations. So the law is the foundation, the regulations are the detail.
Yes.
So these, what we have are the regulations. The law is not here, but the law is the authority for these regulations.
And up till now, how have we been operating?
Well, I believe my predecessor pretty much did whatever he wanted. Or we've been in the same plan forever and have never looked at alternatives.
Uh, these probably came out after we signed up to.
No, 32B, these have been around a long time.
Yeah, okay. Alright, that's the only questions I have.
Anybody else?
No.
No.
You ready for a motion?
I am.
Alright, Madam Chair, I move to adopt MGL, uh, Chapter 32B, Section 21 to 23 to allow negotiation of health insurance changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous with Mr. Tool standing.
Yes.
Recused.
You can come back.
Do you want me to get the reprint it?
I'm still working on them, but thank you.
Next, we're going to review the Code of Conduct policy.
And I did leave, um, I printed out, we got two comments from an employee today, um, so I just printed them off and left them for you. And I would say I agree with both, um, comments that were made. I just wanted to make sure you had those.
Do members of the board have a chance to read these comments?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, definitely. I've also had a chance to read the policy.
It's, that's.
You wrote the policy.
Which means I had a chance to read it.
So, are we, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Please, go ahead, think of work.
Well, they can see her now.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, okay, so I can.
That's okay.
I mean, you can. It is far away. They may not know who's speaking, but.
That's right. So is it your intent that we discuss these two comments and possibly amend the documents, document that we have in our packet? Tonight?
To, to accommodate these comments?
Yes. I mean, one comment is to amend Section C. Um, and then the second one has to do with, should be addressed at all boards. And I guess I have a question about that for Denise, which is the recent court case about behavior. How does that play into us adopting this Code of Conduct policy?
So this policy is a revision that includes the changes. And I'd have to double check. I, I do know that when Hector wrote it, you did take some stuff out.
Yeah.
Um, that I think was added to address the, um, the SJC decision. However, that was really geared more towards boards dealing with members of the public. Specifically during public comment periods, and I don't think we addressed that at all in the policy.
Okay.
So you could certainly put a statement in, um, you know, board members must adhere to the SJC decision. Or just see what happens if someone does or doesn't.
So what, what about, does anyone else have an opinion on, um, Section C could be revised? You don't have an opinion?
No, I think it, it could be advised. I don't see, I don't see anything uh, wrong with revising it to to include that.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with revision for Section C.
Okay, so how would it be revised?
So, hold on, that's what I'm reading.
Right, so right now there's, uh, three refrains.
Well, they have a suggestion here that.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So are we eliminating
Yes.
one of these refrains and replacing?
It would be the, there's actually five.
It's just adding "as applicable" to.
Which one?
The fourth one down.
Refrain from giving instructions to or requesting assistance from Town Department heads.
I think the, I think the addition of the "as applicable" gives it the wiggle room. It gives it the flexibility that it needs because I think that the argument in this is that if you were to read it literally,
Give some more flexibility. Right.
Then it would mean that their hands would be bound, but if you put in "as applicable".
Another amendment, and/or.
And/or, yes.
Yes. So the and/or.
And/or the Town Administrator.
I'm happy with that.
Okay, yep, okay. Does everyone see that? It's four.
No, it's fine. No, 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 thank you.
It's in, it's C4 basically, C bullet point four.
Mm-hmm.
And so it'll be and/or the Town Administrator.
They also.
As applicable.
They also add here and their staff after the, uh, Department heads.
Oh, to Park and his staff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
That's fine.
Um, so I'm sorry, you wanna add the and staff? You wanna include that as the recommendation?
I think the easiest thing, if you have it open for editing, the easiest thing would be to take what the suggestion is here and just paste it over that paragraph.
Yep, yeah.
Cause this is.
I think it's fine, the way it's written.
Three or four changes, differences, and if everybody agrees with the suggestion here, then we could just copy and paste.
Okay.
So, and then as to the first comment.
Alright.
Well, it does say or including.
If I could say something in advance of that.
Yes. Go ahead.
Um, so it does mention in the second paragraph that the Select Board encourages other boards and committees of the town who are not appointed by the Select Board to adopt these standards. From my discussions, uh, Denise and I discussed this and from a few other discussions, we can't enforce
Right.
these on any board we don't appoint or any elected officials.
Except our selves. We could have, we could have, if we made it a bylaw.
But it ain't no bylaw yet.
Yeah, we're not making a bylaw too, right now.
But if we're gonna go through this process, does it not make sense to set this up as a bylaw? So then it is applicable to every board, whether elected or appointed.
That's a town meeting.
We can have that discussion ongoing.
In the future, yeah.
Yeah, we could adopt these and still go forward and make a bylaw that authorit, but what would the bylaw be?
Exactly what this Code of Conduct is.
Yeah, so the, the way, right now this is a policy. And so in terms of sequence, there's law, there's regulations, there's policies.
Yes.
Yeah.
Policy has the weakest legal defense, right? So if we have a standing policy that applies to the boards, our board and the ones we appoint, if you ultimately made it law via a bylaw, which is a town meeting thing, then it becomes for the town.
Yeah.
But for now, I think Hector, your language in here addresses the first comment, in my opinion.
I understand this person thinks it might be pointless, but yeah, we have no legal authority from the way I've been, I've had it explained.
And they recognize that, yeah. And they recognize that, so.
Right. So to make a policy that. I was hoping, I wanted us to make.
I'm trying to get Courtney's attention.
Yeah.
Keep, keep talking.
Okay. I wanted to make sure we had a policy in place because we'd have none right now. A policy that made sense, and I didn't want it to be a policy that tried to enact things that it couldn't enforce.
Yeah, right.
This is stuff we can enforce.
Right. Well, and, and if I'm, oh, sorry.
You might remember wrong, but I thought when we discussed this, uh, at a, at another time, like last year, that we agreed that a certain amount of this is actually in the law. But we were partly having the town policy because when you have a local policy to point to, it is a more efficient way of informing an individual, uh, of our intentions.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's specific, uh, I'm sorry, I'm grasping for words here, that, but it's, it's, um, just stated that this is our local policy. And so it's another way of of reinforcing that this is, you know, that the town has undertaken this code. Go ahead.
Um, I was just going to say, obviously this, there were reasons that we had to put this together. And so I think that, you know, it's, though, the argument might be that it's point, I'd say pointless. Um, I think that there, that you're absolutely right. Like, we, we do need to have something in place. I think that if anything, it allows people to understand that, um, there may be ethical laws that you need to follow. There may be conflict of interest laws that we have to follow, but there also is sort of, uh, unfortunately, um, not everyone understands that.
Understands that.
Um, there needs to be this kind of Code of Conduct policy. And I think that it's, it's going to do us well to have that policy in place. It's really hard to correct behavior if you don't have a policy to back it up. And I think that this policy does a lot of that work, so, sorry. Did you have your hand up?
Oh. Others? Yes.
Yes, I think to add to that, um, the, obviously there is state ethics, there's conflict of interest law. This policy, in my opinion, really discusses how board members should treat each other, how board members should treat staff, how board members should treat members of the public. And that's something that the law doesn't govern. Um, you know, civility should point folks in the right direction with that, but that's not always the case. Um, and yes, we had a number of situations last year, which is why this policy originally came up. Things have been great since then, but I do think we should, I think it's a good practice. I think it quite frankly sets the framework for both sides on expectations. And it just gives folks an outlet that if they are having difficulty, if they're having problems, they have something to refer to and some recourse that they can take, that, you know, instead of just, you know, quitting or quitting a board, it, it gives some, you know, progressive steps to remedy the situation.
Yep. Also, in my mind, this is, I mean, I don't feel as though we, I don't feel as though one, in some ways, we should have to have, you know, the next thing on our agenda is an anti-racism statement. But we have to have all these things these days because apparently, you know, whatever it is, we, we need to say things out loud. I guess that's what it is, is we, we need to say out loud what we believe in and what we hold to be our, our, our creed of behavior, so.
Well, my understanding is if anything happens, the first thing that any lawyer will ask is where's your policy about this? And the laws, the laws, I believe, state what the state can do to a person, doesn't state what the Select Board can do.
Right.
And this clarifies it.
Okay.
So if the board is somewhat in alignment, we have, um, someone with their hand up, it looks like, on Zoom. Would you like to speak? Please identify yourself with your name and, uh, address.
Hi, this is Trish Crawford, 34 Crawford Road in Stone. I just have a quick question. I, first of all, I wanna say I think this is great. I just have a quick question that I don't know is in, if it's in scope or not. But where it talks about public comments, I have to say, uh, I appreciate it that you whited out the email addresses for residents on the comments that were submitted for the, uh, feedback that's included in the package. I've seen that that does not happen for all boards. And where it talks here about public comments, I'm wondering if there's any way to specify that. Cause to be honest, I don't wanna send comments and have the whole world have my email address. So if it's out of scope, I can go with something else.
Sure, uh, Denise?
I, I will, it is, it is all public information if you email. I mean, we extend the courtesy to not provide, um, email addresses or phone numbers in the packet. Uh, but we could because it is, it is open meeting law and covered by public information.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But that was for the anti-racism policy, right?
The correspondence was with the anti-racism policy, but I think she's referring to the Code of Conduct, public comment section, yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
If it was to.
Yeah, I, I've wanted to submit to other boards, but I don't want my email address being out there for the world forever.
Got it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One quick, next question and a reminder, what are the next steps of, after we, if we approve this, it's to go to Town Council and the other boards for review?
So that's up to you all. Town Council, certainly. Um, this has already been reviewed by MMA and KP Law, I know, endorsed it. So they may give it a once-over, but it's up to you what process you want it to take with other boards.
So I would recommend that if we approve this, it definitely goes to Town Council, but also approve it for review, not approve it for implementation yet, and send it out to the boards that we appoint or all the boards and committees that exist in the town, and let them review it and provide any feedback they have, which we can adopt or not adopt, but at least give them an opportunity to comment on it before they're subject to it.
Megan?
While I appreciate that statement, I do think that as we are the ones, as we are the ones that appoint these boards and we are the ones that are the governing board of it, I don't know how to say this nicely, but like, and, and not against you, I, I'm just saying like,
I know what you're saying.
Like, we kinda have to have a spine and say like, these are the rules that we're putting forward and whatever. I don't. again, none of what we are putting forward, I don't think that any board that we appoint would have issue with, as it is basic civility, and if people came back and pushed against that, I would be surprised. And I don't see anything in here that seems controversial. I would be happy to sign this. Again, my two cents says one-fifth of this body, um, but I do feel like if we are going to be the policymaking body, then we need to make the policy. Sorry.
Make a board of them, Dicky. Oh, sorry.
No, no.
Please go.
Okay. This has been discussed by us before. It's certainly been in the public forum before. And so I'm ready to make this policy without waiting yet again. I think we've spent so much time on this, and you especially, Hector, that I, I'm ready to make this a go, and so there's two ways to answer your thing. Either we don't vote on this tonight and send it out to the boards, or we vote on this tonight and see if the boards have comments, but I don't want to vote tonight just to have it be delayed yet again to the other town boards.
Yeah.
So I just put that out there. It's either one or the other, but, in my opinion. As one-fifth of this board.
As one-fifth of the board, I think we do need to make this vote. Um, we act as the CEO of this town, as a corporation. My experience in that position, there are many times you make policies, um, and you set it forth. There's nothing in here that's offensive. You know, I've reviewed it over and over, um, and honestly, a lot of the language that's in here, I've actually used in the past, so, um, all due respect, uh, and I really mean that, Hector, and also thank you for all of your work that you put into this. It's obvious that you and Denise spent a fair amount of time on this. I think it's time that we make the decision. In my humble opinion.
And I will, as one-fifth of the board. Sorry.
Why are we being nice to each other?
Say the same. Say the same. I, I, uh, I understand your, or I think I understand what your intent is, but I agree with Megan's words, we need to have a spine.
Okay.
This is, this is our job, and it's okay for us to set policies that people don't like, because when there's a different board, there could be a different policy, or if somebody really doesn't like us, we can be freed from our position on the board and somebody else can step in. So, you know, I think it's fine to just go ahead with what you've worked so hard on.
Okay.
Yeah, and remember, the policies are the most easy to change of all the legal standing that we have to deal with.
Except for all the hard work of putting them forward, you know, the, the rest, so.
Are you ready for a motion?
Can I ask two questions before you? So, the only change that was made this evening was to see, I, uh, C bullet four.
Four.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then we could certainly discuss this after, but what would you like the process to be, and how long would you like us to give existing board members to sign it? And return, and we need a plan in place if they choose not to, and how we're going to address that in this initial, um, distribution.
Should we vote to adopt it first and then decide that, or should we just do it all at once?
I think, I guess I have a, a question. I, well, I I guess I didn't think about asking people to sign it. And I guess that that's a good way to see if we've got buy-in. Other people have comments on that?
If we implement it and have everyone affected sign it by the end of the year?
Yeah.
It's a long time. I was thinking thirty days.
I was gonna suggest that we, within two of their meetings, so they kept time for putting it on their agendas. We don't know how full their agendas are.
Right.
Or maybe two or three of their meetings.
So the only thing I would say to that is there are some groups that meet seasonally, um, that wouldn't meet necessarily between now and December thirty-first.
Also, that would fit if we said within two or three of your meetings. They don't meet till January, then so be it, kind of thing.
Or we could ask them to make.
Well, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no, that's okay.
Okay.
I, I, it doesn't necessarily need to be on an agenda because we're reaching out to individual board members, so we would reach out if we have individual board member contacts, otherwise we would send it to the chair and ask them to distribute it to their members and return it to the office. So it doesn't necessarily need to tie into a meeting, uh, because a lot of the chairs won't really have a discussion item other than saying this has been approved, and so however you want to do it, we, I would just like to know what, how you would like us to handle that process, what the timeline is and what happens if folks refuse to sign it.
Megan?
Can I make a proposition? Okay, uh, I think we do send it out, um, via the chair or via the contact information. Thirty days feels more than enough time for people to sit on that and make their own decisions, um, and I think that, I think that I don't know. I think that part of me is like, if you don't want to sign it, then you're not on, then you're not going to be in that position. However, I also feel like part of me would want to hear
I would.
why people were so adamantly against signing it. However, I don't know how many people that would be. I don't know what a whole, what that would look like, and I don't know how much, so I don't know. So what I'm saying is I don't know, but thirty eight, thirty days, I think, is a good amount.
My thought, um, would be then to to, um, enact this and to send it out with thirty days in mind and see, see what we get. I mean, if there's a multitude that is opposed, then we would take one approach, but if there's a small number
Right.
that's opposed, we would take another, and I would like to hear people out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I think it's important for people to advocate for themselves when they, when they would like to. And to, to be heard. It may not change the policy, so, I, but I also uh, I mean, I hope there won't be a multitude of people that are opposed to this.
Well, sorry.
Go ahead.
As Megan said, if there are a multitude, there's a big question mark that would be raised.
Yeah.
But I think you're right that, you know, if we give it thirty days and deal on an individual basis with those that would refuse to sign it to find out why and what the circumstances might be, and either they have a point and we might need to change the policy, or they no longer want to.
Participate.
Participate, yeah.
Amy Work had her hand up, so I'm not gonna jump over her, but I have a question too.
I was just looking, the policy would still stand whether or not someone signs it or not, but I was just looking through it. Hector, do you recall if there is someone who is in violation and treating someone rudely or disorderly, indisorderly or boisterous conduct? Is there a method identified in here that asks them to leave the room or something like that? I don't remember.
The, for public bodies, it's what's, whatever's in, um, section four. Basically, from what I'm and this section four is pretty much, uh, what came straight from the MMA
Mm-hmm.
or MIA, one of those M bodies.
Both.
Both, okay. We can insist that they be civil and not disruptive, and can have them removed if they become disruptive. We can limit their time for speaking, but we cannot they could, we can request that they not use foul language, but they could curse us up and down.
It says that the chair may order the person to withdraw if the person so ordered fail, so ordered fails, the chair may authorize it, constable or other officer. So there's your repercussion. So I think
Right.
So, yes, so the issue is that if someone acts that badly, we do have a process in here, and if someone signs or doesn't sign it, let's just see what the wording is. They don't necessarily have to say they agree with it. They're just saying that I have, I don't know, I've received, read and understood. So all it is, it's not saying I'm complying with it. I just, yes, I've seen it. I'd, I'd say I agree with what Courtney said, if there, and you too, Hector, if there's a big pushback against this, then let's hear about it, but at this point, I'm sorry. Yes, you go ahead.
I apologize. I'm waiting for you.
Okay, I'm done.
Go ahead.
So I do want to clarify, so the thought, the, the sentence after the one you just read says, I understand I will be held responsible for complying with the provisions of this policy and am subject to disciplinary action, as outlined in the town charter.
Oh, I didn't read below the bold.
So because they are appointed by this board, you cannot just remove somebody from an appointed position. They would be entitled to a hearing under the open meeting law, given forty-eight hours notice.
Someone had to remove from the room.
Right, so remove from the room, but I think that's the, that, that's what I go back to. If someone refuses to sign this, repercussion is you could certainly have one large meeting for everyone who refused to sign it and have a discussion as to why. But they would be, they are subject to due process and notification if you wish to remove someone from the board.
Yeah, we'd have to follow what the, uh, charter and open meeting laws.
Yeah, got it. I get it. Thank you. Okay, well, let's see how it goes then.
Um, procedurally, is it just going to go through the select board office then? You'll send it out and then you'll get all the feedback, collect it, and then let us know?
Well, I'm hoping to not get feedback.
Oh, I hope you get, you'll be back.
Hoping to get signed.
I meant, if you get, anything that you get that is like, I'm not signing this, absolutely not, then you'll work with the chair to figure out putting it on an agenda and all that jazz. Okay. Just wanted to make sure there was a procedure to be followed.
My only concern would be is if we get seventy percent of them signed and say thirty percent refuse, and then you decide to change the policy based on the thirty percent, but the seventy percent already agreed to it. I mean, that would be sort of a, how do you handle that? But we'll cross that bridge we can't.
Let's handle it.
That's the bridge we come to.
When you see what the issues are.
Yes, yeah.
What, what came to mind for me was that when we had, uh, regulations about masking for COVID, that we had an option. So you were gonna wear a mask or you were going to show that you tested negative, and this isn't the same kind of a thing, but I, I'm just, you know, and we can't have two co- codes of conduct, one for those that agree with one. I mean, I'm just sort of trying to think that, that, you know, it's very different if, if somebody says to me, you know, you're going, you have one option, you're gonna go do this or else, and, or if they say, you know, you have two options, you have A or B, and, 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 uh, you know, I, I feel less cornered, I feel less.
Well, let's see if someone comes up with another option.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're, yeah, we're worrying too much.
I mean, as you mentioned, most of this comes right out of a statute, the open meeting law, the charter, um.
Right, so it's redundancy.
And, and some kind of common decency.
Mm-hmm.
Some kind. All right, I'm ready for a motion.
We ready for a motion? Okay, Madam Chair, I move to adopt the code of conduct policy as amended at tonight's meeting in section C, bullet four.
Second.
Any further discussions?
Do we have another motion for the process, or do we, no, okay.
No, just to the ball.
Unless you want to really formalize it, but I have it.
Hearing no more, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Phew, thank you. Thank you again for putting that forward. Next we will, uh, discuss the anti-racism statement, anti-racism statement with resident feedback. Yes.
So, uh, in reading some of the comments, they were both in support, they were, and oppo- oppos- opposed in terms of why do we need this? And so I think it makes sense, perhaps, just to state out loud why we came up with this policy, and why we, there were comments, I think, then why do we need this? I think we need to remind the public why we need this. And then look at, so when I read the comments, I was a little, um, I could sympathize with the people who thought, why do we need this? But in point of fact, in today's day and age, we do need this, and Stowe, in fact, has had anti-racist activities. And we worked with, um, some very good people in preparing this policy and other towns, so I think it's a solid policy. I'm willing to amend it to some degree, but overall, I think there needs, there, there, there needs to be that reminder of why we're doing this, and then move it forward.
Other comments?
I, I agree with you. Um, I think we have worked. We have talked a lot about policies and proclamations and statements, um, on this board. I was struck by the comment about, you know, this board should be doing other policy, um, and that this is performative. And I, to that, I would say we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I think it's important for us to be able to denounce this stuff at the top, at the C I, CEO level, um, and also do the work of the town. And I think it's important that the people in town can see that we are able to do that. Having said that, I do, um, appreciate some of the, um, some of the amendments to it. I think there are, certainly, a li- there's a little bit of wordsmithing that could get done, um, but I do think it's important, um, I think about families that are looking for places to settle down. I think, um, it would be amazing if we had seen a statement like this when we were coming to move to this town, because I think it also just speaks, um, volumes about the, the values of, um, not only just this board, um, but the town, and, and where you kind of want to, to put your flag down, so. Those are mine.
Other comments?
I think it also, kind of to add on what Megan says, this also many people here may, in this town, may feel that this town has no issues, which I don't think most people agree, but there might be a few. I think of, though, having this policy in place opens it up so that people that would be considered moving into this town who are not white would also feel more comfortable knowing that the town is taking the stand, rather than just said, no, everything's fine, we know it's bad, so we're not we're the only that's stable.
Other comments? JT, anything?
The only comment I would make is, uh, this is important because a fish rots from the head down. Put a blunt line.
I've never heard that.
So.
We're just full of it today.
You've never heard that?
No.
Oh.
Well, it's, if, think about it, it's true, and I think we do need to bring this out, and I do feel we need to make this public. That we are making an absolute stand, that it will not be tolerated, it's unconscionable behavior, and it is not accepted, period. And I think with possible adjustments, as Megan said, with the wordsmithing, this should move forward.
Yep.
I just, it is important.
Yeah, I mean, I as I said before, I'm amazed that we have to make any of these statements, but that, I also understand that, that being clear about boundaries helps everybody in whatever process it is, if, and I've, I've said lately to a variety of business associates that I love it when people are clear, and so that's what this is doing, is being clear. And I, I'm happy to, to look at amendments, to tweak things, make it so that it expresses what we really want to say. But I think it's important. But I think it's important.
So what do you really wanna say?
Can I make some of, some wordsmithing? So uh, Morgan had actually sent. Uh, some redline notes, which I appreciated because they. I think, anyway. Um, so on the second bit, uh, it had said they were sparked at the national level by high-profile killings of black men and women. Recent high-profile police killings of black men and women. I liked that change. I liked the work towards dismantling racism in the last statement of that paragraph. Certainly, obviously, everything I'm saying, please feel free to.
Laugh at you and point fingers?
I mean, I wasn't gonna say that. And do we need to review the code of conduct? So, um, I do, okay, so as far as the bullet points go, I think we could take. Even though most of our residents condemn these acts out, just because. There are, there are some statements that I feel like we make and it's like we strongly make it. But then, you know, a lot of people don't like this and so it's just, I think it, it reads a little bit better if we just take some of the bits out, so. I think, you know, we can take the beyond our control out bit as well. Um, and I did like using the word intersectionalities instead of relations, just because I think that's a, um, clearer term. Those were my. So one of them was a bigger policy, a bigger question. While I appreciated the word cloud, I. Don't know that I have any edits from that, okay. And then the person who wanted to know about antisemitism, we already did that policy. Alright, I'm done.
I would add that um. The word cloud that Christopher Willis sent, yeah, the word cloud's great, but he also pointed out that indigenous people should be. Written as indigenous peoples. As far as the, I really love the edits that Morgan sent, however. I didn't want it limited to just high-profile police killings because there were some murders that have happened.
You know what, you're right.
That are high-profile and weren't necessarily police involved.
Yep, you are absolutely right.
But as far as the other edits. Yeah, I think. I'm okay with accepting all of those. And also Chris.
Excuse me, so what are you saying about the recent high-profile? I mean, it's. Neither, it's just high-profile killings of black men and women. I mean, so were you saying you would not accept those edits?
I wouldn't specify police.
I see. And it's not necessarily recent.
Yeah, it.
It's just. That it happens.
I do, I do wanna.
And antisemitic and, you know, everything. And it's not just black, it's minority, so.
So, hold on, the, but the, the sentences, they were sparked by. Like, I think this is, that ties into the sentence before.
Fully agree with you, but I think.
So fine, I'm fine with not taking those edits, except black men. Black should be a capital.
Which we did before. And I do wanna, so, we must have discussed this after it was posted. At one point, because the one, two, third bullet point, um, we ended it, it just says, we know that many forms of racism are systemic. We didn't add often set by sta- state and federal part, we've already taken that out. So if you're good with still keeping the second phrase there. But yes, we, we um, did capitalize black, um, I add, I just pluralized people for indigenous peoples. And then do we, do you wanna change relations for intersectionalities?
I like that. But uh, Christopher Willis also just suggests changing killings of black people of all gender.
Where? No, instead of men and women?
Instead of men and women.
I'm happy leaving it the way it is. People define themselves.
About black people? Do we need to talk about the gender?
The only reason I would say yes is because one of the most. One of the most dangerous things to be right now is a black transgender woman.
So people works.
So.
So wait, I have a, I have a procedural question. Are we going to sort of agree on a number of amendments and then? Have another, have this be another draft for further comment, or we're gonna?
I think we're ready to move it.
Think we're ready to make the.
I mean, I would be ready to move it, I would like to move it off the agenda, cause it's been on the agenda since I was in chair.
Okay, let's move it.
So what are we putting for that?
Putting there?
Well, how does everybody else feel? One said gender, one said people, one said, leave it as is, men and women.
Or you can just say killings of black individuals.
Human homo sapiens. I mean, we are, we're homo sapiens.
Why don't we just leave it as black men and women?
I think we're, we're getting to in the weeds. Is what I think. Okay?
So, do you have the list of all the changes?
Yes. If I can just save this, then I can go through the ones that we've changed. Let's see, so. Changed. Uh, I did add, which no one other than Megan commented on, um, the work towards dismantling racism in the final sentence of the second. Paragraph. Um, so we added work towards dismantling. Changed indigenous people to indigenous peoples. And changed relations to intersectionalities. Do we take out? Oh wait, maybe it's not, maybe we already did that.
Uh, the first bullet point, do we wanna take out even though most of our residents condemn these acts? I just, that's very much to me like a, I have a friend.
Yeah. I wouldn't do this.
I wouldn't do this.
No, that should be taken out.
Well, I think it was put in there for all good reason.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not, I, I, I'm not saying that it's not, I'm just saying that. It feels stronger to me if it's just, it's a, it's a declaration as opposed to.
Sure, okay, yep.
So taking that out?
Take out even though most of our residents condemn these acts.
And you said you took out beyond our control, right?
I took out.
And, and it's systemic.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Cool.
And last, we added Hispanic slash Latin in the fourth bullet. We added that after the last discussion as well.
Are we ready for our motion?
Ready for a motion?
Alright, uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve the anti-racism statement as amended at this meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, great. And one more policy discussion for this evening. We have a proposal to record. To have a policy to record all. Board and committee meetings and um. Broadcast or upload.
Madam Chair, um, after further discussion, after the conversation, uh, the remarks that. Our town administrator made rather astutely, I think it makes sense if we amend that to the major. Uh, land use boards and financial boards, which would reduce the number considerably.
I'm okay with that. One of the other towns had that, they said um. I would agree with that.
Yeah, a number of towns do, the land use boards and.
May I make just a comment? Um, so two things on this, so obviously you don't have a draft policy, cause this was really a discussion if you wanted to move forward with one. Courtney asked last week if we could put out a call to other towns. Um, Joyce is on an administrative assistant listserv, so that's where we got this, these responses. So you'll notice that out of the um, towns that have a, I'll call it a policy, they're actually a bylaw. The rest of them are more informal votes and decisions, so however you'd like to proceed, if there, if you do wanna see a policy, I'm happy to draft one up for. You know, discussion, based on whatever terms you'd like to put forward, um, or you can have a discussion and um, just vote to. Move forward with it, um, however you wanna proceed. So that's the board.
Having been here for a few other meetings that. If they're not held in this room or any other room that has a recording device. I don't know how. Would that be, what would have to happen is all meetings would have to be held wherever there's a recording device or more recording devices would need to be.
Zoom. Most of our boards are still meeting fully on Zoom.
And then that file would be submitted to.
So it could go through Stowe TV to upload to the Stowe TV YouTube channel. There could be a, you know, if the planning department, there could be a planning board YouTube channel where they upload them, however. Um, if that's the method you wish to take, but yes, the majority of the boards um, are meeting. I'm trying to think, I know the assessors will only meet in person, um, they're not meeting on Zoom. Obviously, we meet hybrid. Zoning board meets hybrid, um, so anyone who has a hybrid offers a Zoom capability and could record. Um, it would be the, the boards that are fully in person. If they meet your criteria, we'd have to, they would have to have a Zoom component or some other method, or meet here or something.
And I'm all for doing that because I know I've looked for minutes or discussions from other boards and haven't necessarily been able to find it. But it's, I'm sure you're aware. Who's gonna train people to do this?
Well, so again, if it's just a matter of Zoom, they just have to hit record and then an email comes out with the link to the recording.
Right, because there's other organizations where we were saying, yeah, just hit record and it'll take care of it and. People find ways to mess it up.
Yeah, so we could certainly put something out, um, they just have to click record to the cloud. And then, as long as it's under a Town of Stowe account, I can go into the backend and get the meetings. So as long as they're recording to the cloud, they're going to the Town of Stowe account. And we have. You know, we have all of the primary department heads that um, report to boards have accounts. And then we have four generic board and committee accounts, so as different boards are meeting, they use one of those. Again, if they record them, those meetings are going to. The Town of Stowe's um, recording management side of Zoom. So we could just put something out, again, it could be part of the policy. You must record to the cloud through Zoom. And if you're not using a Town of Stowe Zoom account, you must forward us the link, which comes with the link and a passcode to access it. It's very easy, once, that side is done, it's very easy to download, um, you just go in, download it and then it, it's a file and.
Oh, I know how easy it is for me or other people who are tech savvy to do that. I also know how challenging it could be for. People that, sorry Megan.
No, 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 it's fine. I, I was gonna, I was gonna point out, I, a lot of boards are recording. I think that the bigger part of this policy is the upload part of it. I think a lot of boards are recording because that's how they take their minutes. Um, or I know some, some boards do that to take their minutes. I know that's how Erica used to do it for finance committee. Um, and so, cause it's a lot. Um, I think that the, what I'm getting from this policy is. Is making that, not just if you happen to be there in that moment, or you had access to it after. But really allowing people to be able to see what's in it. If we are. Following transparency and we really want people to be able to see stuff, and I understand that there is going to be pushback to this. Fully from, and. And everyone's allowed to have their opinion, but I do feel like. We would, are doing a disservice. I mean, there, there are meetings that we just cannot go to, because we are in this room. And yet we are expected to have comments on, or I have people say to me like, oh, did you see what happened in that meeting? I'm like, no, I'm in. The war, like, I, no, I didn't see anything and I couldn't get to it later, so. I just, I, I think this discussion has been a very long time coming. And I think that COVID just kind of. Pushed it forward in the way that we could actually do it that is the least painful. So, that's again, my two cents.
You know, and I just wanna echo, uh, that's why I brought this up uh, originally, um, because I really feel that. Transparency above all is the most important aspect of government and. You know, people might feel like, you know, oh, we're being held accountable at this. Transparency. We owe this to the folks that live in this town. To be able to access, access that. We also owe it to ourselves as a select board, because as Megan just pointed out. I've not been able to figure out how to uh, make another one of me and thank God the world couldn't put up with another one, but. So I can't be in two places or three or four places at all. Uh, my only other comment to this is if we're gonna go through this process and. I'd really like to do this once and really, and really make it a bylaw. Move it forward to that point so that. Because um. Land use, uh, as an example, planning board, we can suggest. Under the policy, they don't necessarily have to follow it. So rather than go through this process twice, I'd rather see us sit down, draft up a bylaw, get it passed through town council. Make sure it's set, present it at town meeting, and let's move this thing forward. So that the general public can see what they need to see in our town government.
So.
No comment, no. I'm not following that statement.
Okay, then I will.
It's like, okay then.
So I would say that. I would like to put forth a point of view whether it's. This is for the sake of debate that I'm putting forward this point of view. I'm not even saying that it's my point of view, but it's one fifth of this board. There, at the moment, because we are following open meeting law and, and. Almost all of our boards and committees are publishing a link to a Zoom meeting. Voters in this town, residents in this town can attend meetings via Zoom or in person. Because we, we put it out there and it's, it's, you know, known. Uh, how to access the meetings. And. You know, years ago, we didn't have Zoom, so that was, you showed up. Um, I think it's, it's highly beneficial to us as a board and possibly to other boards. You know, we, we've had our discussions about liaison positions on the select board and trying to figure out how to. How to collaborate if we can, if we can be in the same room with each other virtually by watching a meeting that we couldn't attend. For better or for worse, we have information about what's going on there. So I think it's highly beneficial to us in government. I took seriously the comment that Trish made earlier in, on. in, on another topic this evening, that there are people that feel uncomfortable about being publicly visible and, you know, it's, it's, it's one thing to worry about what I say or how my hair looks or with my eyes, you know, or, um. It's, it's another to feel. You, you know, when we publicize these things to the world, they're out there on a larger platform and you know, I'm just gonna, I, I'm just wanna recognize the point of view that that may be, that may not be easy for everybody.
Can I respond to that, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Um. Individuals who push back on something like this if really makes me feel like, what are you trying to hide? And I can tell you that in this present day, that question is asked more of anybody in government we, than any other question.
For good reason.
Yes. So my point here is, and the point of the transparency of it, there shouldn't be any pushback. There's nothing that these boards should have to be worrying about. The other aspect is it does give that record, so it gives the opportunity to be able to go back and to look at, um, things that were discussed and decided which can facilitate this board as well as other, other boards to try to work more cohesively, to move the vision of what Stow is and what it's about and what we want it to be. I mean, I'm sorry if they're feeling a bit uncomfortable, but you got elected to a public position. And if they're saying, you know, well, there's open meeting law and everything else, well, if it's in open meeting law and they're there already, what's the big deal about having it recorded so that we have that and we move it forward?
Yeah, I mean, I basically agree. I just.
Okay, I'm just counterpointing to your counterpoints, that's all.
Hector.
Um, I also would support doing this. I'm not quite clear, JT, if you were suggesting that we don't adopt the policy and just go for the bylaw instead? Because I would not support that. I think we should adopt the policy and go for the bylaw. We need to do something now. We have the technology, not to sound like the six million dollar man, but we have the technology and we can do the recordings. And, you know, there's a lot of push for police forces to wear body cameras. Anybody, and many town, many government entities to have a recording. It reduces the human error because even if you're just relying on minutes, even the minute taker can make a mistake or doesn't necessarily write the minutes all the way. Something happens in the meeting, you can go back to the video and verify what was said, who said it, when was it said. And again, I just think it's, I agree that if you're leery about being recorded, that is unfortunate, but you're in a public service. It comes with the territory now.
Just gonna check with Ingleborg and see if she has a comment to, to follow some other, some other stance rather.
A, a policy is a good way to start and I'm neutral on the bylaw, but I'm not saying no on the bylaw. I think absolutely that some of these towns do have bylaws and that's totally appropriate. So I think a policy is a good way of setting up the stage, setting the stage, so everybody is aware. There, for those commissions and bodies that do not have, um, that meet only in person in small little rooms with the door open, we'll have to support them in some way. But, um, I am happy to pursue this first as a policy and second as a bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I just was trying to save the board some time. I'm going through this twice, that's all.
I, I think, I, I'm, I'm with Ingleborg on, on that. I think that it's fine to, to use the policy as a building block for bylaw.
Yeah, well, already.
Also, also it allows us to get started on it.
Yeah.
As opposed to having to wait to go through a town meeting, um, which also.
And it helps us figure out the wrinkles that we have to deal with.
Right. Can I just have, before, when you're ready for motion, I just have questions on how you want me to make this motion, cause I've taken a bunch of notes.
You can ask him now.
Okay. Are we, so are we changing it to all major land use boards and financial boards? Uh, it's a further pursuit of potential policy? Like, are we saying that those are the only ones that we care about? Understanding full well that we can't have a policy for other elected boards?
I, the reason why I had asked for the amendment to it was because of the resources that we have here in town.
Uh-huh.
To try to do every single.
Right, but if everybody, if, if, and I, I don't know the number, how many people are really on Zoom? Like you said, really just the assessors are meeting in public?
The assessors meet fully in person.
Okay.
Um, the council on aging may meet fully in person. I, there's a handful that meet hybrid and everyone else is remote. I don't think anyone else is meeting in person other than the assessors and.
I guess I just wanna understand what the lift is on the town's resources.
Well, so it does depend. I mean, if we need like Spring Fest committees recorded, if we need, um, um, the cultural council meetings recorded, or are you picking like the five major boards and committees?
So it would be the ZBA, Concom, Finance Committee. Come on, help me out, people. We don't have.
Planning, well, planning board.
Well, play, except planning board is an elected board, so I, we can't.
Well, and FinCom is appointed by the moderator. So I think, I think to JT's point.
Right, so.
I think we're gonna ask that. We're gonna do just what we did with the code of conduct and we're gonna say, we would like this to happen. Would you pretty please
Okay.
just go along with us?
And, and I, I think you could say we encourage all boards.
Right, okay.
But these are the ones we would specifically request be recorded. I mean, I think we could ask everyone. I mean, if everyone, again, if they're meeting on Zoom, if they do it the right way, it takes five seconds to hit record and have it.
Right, but I mean, the lift for the resources for the town is just the cloud?
It's just uploading.
Okay.
So that's, so however you could say.
Maybe a little training or, or tech support to help.
Yeah, we could put something out, but I think, you know, if it's, we request all boards, but specifically blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
And then we certainly could tell them when, when we put something out that it, the board is potentially looking for a bylaw so that it would encourage them to do it now and not wait for a bylaw, but
Okay.
however you want to, whatever boards you wanna identify, um.
Okay, I think.
I think, um.
I think I figured, oh, sorry.
And so, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking capital planning sometimes meets in person.
Okay.
Sometimes meets on Zoom, so they may be, if you're, if that's one of the ones.
Well, capital planning, I mean, it seems like everybody's been pretty amenable to the Zoom meetings, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Last year, they were in person. During budget season, they were all in person. So.
Capital.
But I mean, as long as Ollie over here is fixed, then they can be in, if they're meeting in a town room, right?
So yes and no. This room and upstairs are fully wired. The first floor is not. So we have a Zoom, you could, I mean, you have now, you can plug it into your computer and run a Zoom.
Okay, but so they could do a Zoom in there, okay. Okay.
But it's not, we don't have the same technology.
No, no, I didn't mean that big screen. I just meant the, I meant the owl that could plug into a computer. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, the green advisory committee meets in person, but.
They meet here though, but they do Zoom. They have a Zoom component, yeah.
We, we, right, we do.
Okay, I think I have a motion. Whenever you are ready.
Just to clarify, we're just going to vote on moving forward with creating a policy.
Yes.
We don't have.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't have one.
Okay, good.
Alright. Ready?
Yeah, let's have a motion. We can still discuss it.
Alright.
That's what the further discussion is about.
Do you, wait, oh, do you, well, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Oh, okay.
Please, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to further pursue a potential policy for all Stow Board and Committee meetings, but specifically all major land use boards and financial boards to be recorded and broadcast slash uploaded to YouTube. And to authorize the town administrator to seek out examples of other policies on recording meetings for the board's consideration.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Denise?
So to that, I mean, and I know it's in here as an option. Do you want me to provide multiple or do you want me to say here's a recommended policy? Cause this says to seek other examples, which we've done by saying this is not a formal policy.
Oh, I think if you just.
I could take a draft policy together.
We were quite a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read? Right, I can reread it. I'm gonna do it.
And I, I'm sorry, I would ask you to clarify what you mean by land use and financial boards, because someone's gonna say, like, the assessors technically is a.
Let's list them specifically.
The assessors are technically a financial board. Are you including them? I, I think there needs to be some clarification, so this goes out and includes whoever you want it to include.
Can we say for purposes of moving this forward?
Mm-hmm.
As written, and then when we pursue the policy, we'll to narrow down or specifically identify, because for us, I think what we need is a listing of the boards, otherwise we're just.
Yeah, shooting in the dark.
Shooting in the dark.
So I've written a lot of stuff down and now I'm going to read, I'm gonna make another motion.
Go.
With shorter motion.
Okay.
I move to further pursue a potential policy for all Stow Board and Committee meetings to be recorded and broadcast slash uploaded to YouTube and to authorize the town administrator to provide us with a draft policy.
Second.
Yes.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I thought it was unanimous.
Yes, sorry.
That's okay, I just wasn't looking.
Um, do we have to do anything about the other motion that was dangling that we did? Okay, just, just.
No, the my back.
It will be rescinded in your minutes.
Um.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you, Megan, for your motion. Um, minutes, do we have any comments on our excellent minutes that we're provided with?
Why does it call them minutes and not hours?
They're supposed to be more specific than the hours.
They're supposed to be very, very specific.
Okay.
We could call them quarter hours. Are you suggesting a pause?
Wow.
I couldn't resist.
You couldn't.
A bylaw, not a pause.
You must do a bylaw.
I would like a charter change, actually.
Go to town meeting.
Uh, I, I think they're good. I think they really, that's usual.
How about a motion on that then?
Um, Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the September twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting as drafted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Any other, uh, conversations on correspondence or other topics? Yes, Ingleborg.
I have, um, the PFAS data.
Yeah.
Is, is that it?
No.
No. No, that's the wandering pond or whatever it's called. Um, any new surprises in the data? Have you had a chance to look at them?
I have not, um, gone through this, um, mainly because it's, while it affects our residents, it's not our PFAS, it's the state overseeing this one, so I haven't gone through the backup.
Okay, I was just wondering if we have more. We have a, a lot of little hotspots all over the place and.
We do. So this is specific to the, um, Fire Academy and, um, there's not a ton.
Okay, so it was that, so.
This is just the Fire Academy report.
Got it.
Um, and there's not as many hotspots from there as you would expect, um.
Right.
So nothing new that I've seen pop up, but I don't know that they're still testing. I know that, I think they have their sort of buffer and now they're just doing their remediation.
Okay, thank you. No other comments? Questions?
Anybody else? Hearing none, we have a last motion?
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you for Denise for helping with this.
Yes, that was.